Must be orange. She's wearing orange, she's wearing orange, they're, they're all wearing orange. Must be a theme.
I think it's for the Action Month, that might be their colors. And usually they, uh...
It's, it's interesting that everybody has orange.
Yeah, so I guess they're celebrating a theme, yeah.
Now, if I had been here...
Well, and Keith's got orange on his shirt, yeah.
I'm worried about how do you know it was orange today? Wearing orange, oh yeah.
You think so? I'm from Michigan, so for me this is... And when I go back there, they think I'm nuts, and I said, wow, I said, in the desert it's different. I said, so when I come back here, your cold is really not as cold as where we are in the desert because there's no... You know, it's a real biting cold, you know? Yeah, I have my winter awards. Well, I know you did, because we were, we were across the, across the Great Lakes of the forest.
Call this meeting in order? Mr. Montez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're very welcome, thank you. If you wish to remain standing, invocation by Minister Lee Risper from the Sanctuary Church.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow our heads, Hemi Father, we praise this evening to give you thanks for the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, and convene with beauty of the desert that you created. Thank you for the gifts of life, for the families, businesses, and service members who called this city home, and the opportunity to gather at the close of another day, Hemi Father. We lift before you the mayor and the members of the city council, Twenty-Nine Palms, grant them wisdom that comes from above, pure peace-loving, considerate, and full of mercy, as they discuss and decide matters that affect the lives of residents. May their words be guided by justice, fairness, and compassion. Lord, bless their household with peace and strength. Guide their minds from weariness and discouragement. Keep their hearts humble and open to the needs of the people they serve, Hemi Father. We pray for unity in their deliberation, even when opinions differ. Let respect, patience, and understanding prevail in every discussion. May the welfare of the city always be placed above personal interests. We also ask your protection over the people of Twenty-Nine Palms this evening, Hemi Father. Our military families, workers, leaders, and children, watch over our homes, our schools, our neighborhoods. Let this city flourish in safety, opportunity, and hope. We ask all this in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Here.
Mayor Bildring?
Here.
All present?
Close session announcements, there is none, change the agenda?
Uh, Mayor, there are none.
Alright. Announcements, these proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website at www.29palms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going on our website and clicking on the meeting agendas link. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamation. Proclamation to honor the Hunger, uh, the Hunger Action Month. City of Twenty-Nine Palms proclamation Hunger Action Month, whereas the City of Twenty-Nine Palms of California is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources to those in Twenty-Nine Palms' needs. And whereas, the City of Twenty-Nine Palms is committed to working with the Find a Food Bank, a member of the Feeding America nationwide network of food banks, in, to educate people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising, and raising awareness of the need to devote more resource and attention to hunger issues. Whereas, the members of the Find Food Bank distribution distributes more than twenty-two million meals in through its networks and food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. Whereas, the month of September has been designated as Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurities in our communities and enlist the public into the fight to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure nobody has, has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. Now therefore to be resolved that the city council of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms does hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five is Hunger Action Month in the City of Twenty-Nine Palms, California, and we call, and we call this observance to the attention of our citizens dated the twenty-third day of September twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, thank you so much, I truly appreciate the proclamation, city council members, community members of Twenty-Nine Palms. Again, thank you so much for your support and the recognition of Hunger Action Month in the month of September. My name is Debbie Espinoza, I'm the president and CEO of Find Food Bank. Um, a lot of people here in the, uh, audience today, they were asking questions like, why are, why is everybody wearing orange, what's going on? And, and that's the beauty of the orange, right? It's because it's bright, it's brilliant, it makes people ask the question, what is going on? And for us, every September across the United States, the regional food banks want to remind people that one, there are still people that are suffering from food insecurity. There are still people that come to us and our partner organizations every day who ask the question, can you help me because I don't have food in my pantry? I don't have food in my refrigerator. I live with my mother and my grandmother, and I'm trying to figure out how to feed them. People don't think that it's happening today, and I can guarantee you, we have thousands of people up here in the high desert, as well as in the low desert and the Coachella Valley, that we feed regularly. The twenty-two million pounds of food that we, uh, distribute on average, or, sorry, the twenty-two million pounds of food that we distribute annually, every year, goes out to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand people on average every month. Up here in Twenty-Nine Palms itself, when we look at the data and the statistics of the, of the, uh, two-hundred, twenty-two million pounds, for Twenty-Nine Palms itself, we distributed almost four-hundred thousand pounds to this city. In the Coach, in the high desert, when we look at all of the cities combined together, we were close to over a million pounds that was coming up here into this community. For us, we want to make sure that nobody ever feels like they're left behind and that they have equitable access to healthy and nutritious meals on a regular basis, so they don't have to wor, wonder where the next meal is coming from. Our support to them through free food also is one of the best ways to help prevent people from going homeless. Ninety-seven percent of the people that we feed are actually not homeless. They are people that are working, they are fixed-income seniors that are retired, they are children that are going to school, they are moms and dads and sisters and brothers who are working but are struggling to make ends meet in our continually high cost of living areas of California. So for us, when we can provide them free food, they have the capability of taking money that they would have to apply towards that food and put it towards their rent, their utilities, their mortgage payments, their fuel to get into their cars to go to work. That is the meaning of what the work is to the community members that we have here, and that is why we will continually to do it over and over and over again for many more years to come. We appreciate your support and we appreciate your recognition in going orange today. Thank you for helping us have people ask the question, why are they wearing orange? We appreciate it.
Alright, number two, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, city council members, uh, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Louis Vedari, I'm with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, better known as SBCTA. Uh, tonight, uh, I wanted to provide you a brief overview and reminder of the role SBCTA plays, uh, and especially Measure I in delivering transportation projects within the City of Twenty-Nine Palms and throughout the county. Uh, SBCTA is the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for San Bernardino County. Uh, the, it's twenty-four cities, towns, and five supervisory districts. Uh, we were established in nineteen seventy-three as the San Bernardino Associated Governments, better known, better known as Sandbag, uh, San Bernardino County's Council of Governments, and that's a role we still play today. Uh, and, uh, we were designated the county's chief transportation planning agency in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, our governing board consists of representatives from the twenty-four cities, towns, including, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Mintz, uh, as well as the five county supervisors. Uh, amongst our primary duties, uh, measure, uh, SBCTA is the administrator of Measure I funds. Uh, Measure I plays a pivotal role in funding, uh, planning, and delivery of projects throughout the county. I'd like to play a short video for you, if I may? Thank you, I want to thank Cindy for, uh, playing that video. Uh, at the last city council meeting I was on, uh, it didn't work, so I'm really appreciative. So a little history about Measure I. Uh, it's countywide half-cent sales tax approved, uh, originally by county voters in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, and overwhelmingly, uh, approved again in, uh, two thousand and four. Uh, Measure I, uh, provides, uh, funds for transportation, uh, throughout the county. Since twenty-ten, Measure I has raised more than two-point-five billion, uh, for transportation projects. It's contributed more than seven-hundred million for local streets, roads, sidewalks, pothole repairs, and traffic signals. And combined with state and federal funds, Measure I has helped deliver two-point-nine billion in regional projects, and most significantly, uh, contributed, uh, to the creation more thirty-two thousand jobs. And these figures don't include contributions Measure I, uh, makes to public transit, like, uh, basin transit, as well as senior and specialized transit. Some of the significant regional projects that Measure I has contributed to, the recently completed I-ten, uh, truck climbing lane through Ukiah and Calamasa, State Route two-ten extension, Interstate fifteen, uh, interchange improvements throughout the high desert, uh, Interstate ten express lanes, and the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. Here within Twenty-Nine Palms, some examples of local projects that benefit from Measure I are citywide pavement maintenance and improvement projects, intersection safety improvements, Split Rock Road Bridge Project, uh, State Route sixty-two, uh, street improvement project, and the citywide channel trail system amongst others. One of the key components of Measure I passed by voters was the inclusion of taxpayer protections. Amongst those, uh, an independent taxpayer oversight committee to provide citizen review and oversight to ensure that funds are spent appropriately. A cap of one percent of Measure I funds can be used for administrative purposes, and Measure I funds are regularly, are regionally allocated based on a return-to-source model which provides reliable funding, uh, stream for the city for transportation projects. Um, we're pretty proud of our track record at SBCTA, uh, of doing everything, uh, cost efficiently uh, and, and effectively, uh, as you can see at the state and federal level, some of the budget issues they've been having, uh, so we're really proud, uh, of the job that we do in protecting taxpayer, taxpayer funds. So, one of the primary reasons I'm here tonight is we are planning for the future, um, and so we want to hear from, uh, local leaders, as well as the general public, on, uh, what they believe has worked, um, transportation infrastructure-wise uh, over the last twenty years, uh, and what you'd like to see more of in the future. Uh, please go to, uh, go sbct.com/measurei, uh, take our survey, uh, and register your comments. That concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions?
Well, I have a question, I just want to, the, the basin, he's touched on basin transit a little bit. We would not have basin transit without funds from SBCTA, um, it would not be affordable. The, the amount we give the, the college students, uh, free passes, the students at the high school and, uh, to go to school get free passes, but if, without those funds, it would, it wouldn't be affordable for seniors to even ride the, the bus, so. It just, that's another way the SBCTA is, um, helping our community.
I, I have a question, as far as, um, this going all-electric, how's that gonna impact Measure I?
Well, it's, uh, you mean like gas tax?
Yeah.
Well, Measure I is, is a sales tax, so anything, any taxable good you buy within the county, a, a half-cent goes, goes to, uh, transportation projects. So, um, going electric, it will affect, um, Senate Bill One funds, which are gas tax. Um, that is an issue that we're, we're struggling with. Um, as more, um, vehicles go electric, the gas tax revenue decreases. Um, but, but I think that that, but that's a state issue. Um, but I think that that makes Measure I, um, much more valuable. Um, we rely on it, uh, you know, uh, purchases within the county, stay here in the county that the state can't touch them, uh, and we're able to use those funds to leverage, uh, state grants and federal grants. So, uh, in regards to electric vehicles, it's, it's not gonna have too much of an impact to Measure I, um, but I think that situation makes Measure I more valuable.
Thank you.
Public, anything?
No, no. No, this is actually just to highlight, um, what we're doing and how we're protecting, um, taxpayer dollars. Um, as I said before, it was originally passed in eighty-nine and renewed overwhelmingly by almost eighty percent of county voters, which is, uh, sort of unheard of for, for a tax measure. Um, but, we want to, um, you know, and this lasts through twenty forty. So, we're not up yet, uh, but we want to emphasize, um, how, you know, cost-effectively and efficiently that we're delivering projects for you. Uh, we're studying that, we, uh, we're actually, I think we just completed a study regarding two forty-seven and sixty-two. Um, one of the things I know that the county supervisor, uh, that represents this area is really concerned about is what happens if there's a natural disaster and the Cajon Pass closes down. Um, the, the alternate routes, um, would come through two forty-seven and sixty-two, um, and improvements need to be made to those, uh, those roads. If, if something like that happens, we need to be prepared, uh, and, and improvements need to be made out here. So, so we are studying that. Um, I believe, uh, a bus rapid transit system would, would qualify. Um, TOD would not qualify. Um, one of the things, uh, with Measure I that the voters passed was a very specific, uh, project list. Um, the voters, uh, you know, we can't just fund whatever we want. Um, so it's, it's very, uh, prescriptive in the measure, transit is a piece of it, so, um, you know, BRT would qualify, um, but TOD wouldn't.
Back to council, any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, I did receive a letter from Eric Lennon about this, and you received that copy? Right, thank you. Alright, council comments and reports, some meetings attended, Councilman Scott?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I attended, uh, meetings with various constituents, um, some of it regarding, uh, the recent flooding, others regarding, um, projects at the, at Lucky Park and improvements at Lucky Park. I also attended the, um, the shower event that was hosted, um, by, um, Reach Out, Reach Out Yucca Valley, and I received a report, um, where twenty-one members of the community attended, uh, and they actually had, um, thirteen members of the, I'm sorry, um, and they had about nine volunteers. And this was a collaboration between, uh, private business, like Wingin' It, with, uh, with other nonprofit organizations like Reach Out Morongo Valley, um, I'm sorry, Reach Out Morongo Basin. And so it was a really, it was a really well-attended event, and I just want to say thank you guys for what you do for the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, um, attended the Charlie Kirk, um, vigil last, uh, I meant Sunday night. And, um, I also attended the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at the Rosterita Cantina. Um, give a shout-out to them, you guys, make sure you visit them and book some events and all that good stuff. And then I've been doing a lot of, uh, Warhawks football. We've been coming up a little short, but we still growing, so we'll be alright.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
I attended Hispanic Heritage Month, I attended the State of the County, um, address. I also went to the Warhawks pep rally. Um, I went to the San Bernardino County Office of Homeless Services, East Valley Regional Steering Committee. I met with, um, and I, I'm gonna try my best not to butcher this, Uaviatam of San Manuel Nation, um, and their leadership. And, um, I also met with thirteen constituents, um, that had a lot of concerns about them, um, the living conditions that some of the people that rent to them have, have them, and, uh, you know, I think that there's, there's a lot of room for growth in that area. And, um, one last thing, I just wanted to, while we're all up here wearing orange, um, for the Find Food Clinics, I wanted to remind everybody that September is also National Suicide Prevention Month. Um, it's okay not to be okay, I will tell that to everybody all the time. Um, and one of the really amazing resources that we have up here is, uh, Pacific Clinics. They offer free counseling, they have therapists for children, for teenagers, for adults, for military, for grieving, for anything you could think of, um, their resources are up here. And they don't actually accept insurance, so insurance is not an issue if, um, they're federally funded as of right now through a grant. So if you guys, if, if you know anyone that's struggling, or if you yourself are struggling, please, um, reach out and get the help that you need, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the Hispanic Month, uh, at Freedom Plaza, was there for a short time. Uh, attended the Mayor's Breakfast, was a few minutes late, got the time wrong, but I was there. Um, parked cars up at Sky's the Limit, there was a hundred and fourteen attendees. Um, again, a lot of them are from out of the country, there are some still, some folks that are, are visiting us from, um, um, from out of the country, and they, uh, they do enjoy the night sky. And also I attended, uh, Mountain Desert Meeting for, um, part of SBCTA. And then also went to the Warhawk opening, yeah, it was a pep rally, so, it was good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, thank you. See, I got a list, attended the Warhawks pep rally, hopefully I got, um, a little motivated to go crash some helmets. Uh, also got the, got the, um, the Base MMA Event, got to participate and not participate, I get my, I get tore if I participated. Got to witness and watch the MMA event, um, what else I got? American Heritage Girls did their nine-eleven honor walk, so I got to speak to them before they stepped off and thanked them for everything they're doing and keeping the memories alive and that no one's forgotten. Um, Hispanic Heritage Levitt Grant Event at Freedom Plaza, that was, uh, I, I want to say something, that was five days of people working together to make that event happen. And, uh, I know there's some, some confusion out there, thought it was a two council member initiative. It was a city, all of us in the city were pushing that to make it happen for the Levitt Grant, and I think we did a good job, we got, we got what we needed out of it. So, I want to thank everyone who participated in that and got that thing going in the last minute, so thank you for that. Uh, Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, I was there for that, of course. Uh, attended the Elks Event, Elks Lodge Event, where, uh, they recognize some agencies and some individuals are doing great things in the community, so I thank them for that, for recognizing those. Um, meetings with citizens and some business owners, uh, the flood is a big issue, so that, that's something that I think all of us have been dealing with and how to make that happen. As you can see, all through California flooding is not just in Twenty-Nine Palms, it's everywhere. We've been lucky, it hasn't been as bad as some other places, so, you know, bless us on that one. That's all I got, anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
You too, you got it.
I just forgot, I did let everybody know I got to take picture with the mayor at a couple of events.
It's like every event.
Yeah, I also, um, forgot to note that I'd also attended the Hispanic Heritage, uh, event, um, Levitt Foundation Grant. And I also want to thank the hard work of the organizations that helped to push that, um, and get that grant going. It's very powerful for our community.
Thank you, and consent calendar, to all matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form of listing. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to commit, the comment on the consent counter items prior to city council action. City clerk, are there any ordinance to be read, titles? Okay? Or are you, this, which one's the? Um, is he here, Eric's here, I saw him, right? Oh, Carlos, yeah, Carlos, you, you want me, you want to come up and speak on him? I got your email, so that goes for the record, or do you want to talk to? So, five, six, seven, eight? So, five, six, seven, eight, all in one, all in those? Yeah. How do we do that? Yeah, I was like, how do I go first? Go ahead. Counsel, you got anything?
No, I got nothing on the consent calendar.
Right, number?
Read it?
Yes.
Okay. So, the ordinance is adoption of an ordinance amending chapter two point oh one titled City Manager of the Municipal Code, Changing Responsibility for Supervisory Authority Over the City Clerk From the City Council to the City Manager.
Public? Five? Eric, I mean Carlos?
Carlos Blennen, homeowner. Buen dia, señora Calde, concejales, amigos y vecinos. Es un placer poder hablar con ustedes. Good day, Mayor and councilmembers, friends and neighbors. It's a pleasure speaking to you. Because most people, I say, will fear coming up to this podium, you know? Maybe it'll be public speaking, stuck at work, you know? Or just repercussions of being able to speak their voice, sometimes that comes with it. So, for adoption five ordinance, I'm in favor. Dr. Stone is a person of integrity. He keeps, he is keeping true to his word of cleaning up the city from these blighted properties. For example, the KAB Mark is finding getting attention it needs. I hope we allow him to continue his efforts by properly managing the city staff and giving our public servants the attention they need. So, I am in favor for this. Thank you.
All right, number six?
I'll move the consent calendar first to Mr. Mayor. Second.
Yeah, okay. Because I'm like, this is going out of order.
Yeah.
All right.
Councilwoman Ramirez? Aye. Councilwoman Wright?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Number six?
Thank you, Mayor. So, number six is really an opportunity this evening for the public to comment on the Tourism Business Improvement District. So, at the last City Council meeting, the council heard a great presentation by the individual, really director of the T-Bid, Brienne Desandre, Desastre. And she provided a tourism marketing plan overview and a budget, which the council approved. And so, tonight, as a part of the process, this is an opportunity for really the public to come up or any of the T-Bid stakeholders specifically to come up and speak in, in favor of the T-Bid or in opposition of the T-Bid. And so, for the folks at home or in the audience who may not be familiar with the T-Bid, I'll just take a moment to explain what the T-Bid is. So, the T-Bid, Tourism Business Improvement District, that is managed by a five-member advisory board that is appointed by the City Council and is comprised of local lodging owners and operators. Each year, the advisory board is required to submit an annual report to the City Council including a tourism marketing plan and budget outlining the efforts to be undertaken in the following fiscal year. And so, this really is about the assessment of a one point five percent assessment. Now, that one point five percent assessment is different than the city's transit occupancy tax. The one point five percent assessment is levied on all hotel, motel, RV, and vacation rental businesses within the city. And it is a function of their base room-night rate. So, for example, if they charged a hundred dollars a night, there would be an additional tax that the tourist would pay of one point five percent. Now, that one point five percent assessment is different than TOD. TOD goes directly to help fund city services, roads, parks, law enforcement. The one point five percent T-Bid assessment goes and is only designated for the marketing of the city as a destination to bring more people into the community. More people into, come to our businesses, come to our restaurants, and come to our hotels. Hence, the, the value and the importance of a T-Bid. So, with that, Mayor, if you would like to go ahead and open the public hearing, if there's any individuals in the audience, they can comment at this time.
Carlos? Got more? Yeah. Public? Go ahead.
Hi, Carlos Blennen again. In favor of this, I'm in favor of this. The city is growing and returning to something that has been waiting for. I hope to attract more homeowners who will invest and, and live in their property rather than just park their money to generate passive income from a long-term rental and let their tenants go wild without recourse. This will foster the desert motif echoed in our general plan mission statement. Hanging right here on this wall. Let's invest in our city's mission statement and be the key to the desert for a better future of progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Vino?
Vino Nathraj, I'm a, I'm a stakeholder. In fact, I've built most of the hotels. And through my combined effort, me and the entities that I have brought to the city has actually contributed the most TOD in the city. I'm beginning to wonder whether we have two city of Twenty-Nine Palms. I know that Brienne is in charge of the Visit Twenty-Nine Palms. And I went in and I viewed over six hundred of the postings, come visit Twenty-Nine Palms, come visit Twenty-Nine Palms. I've not seen a single one of the businesses that's west of a ranch or hotel, including the Nine Palms Inn or any of the business, including the hotels marketed. The people who gets the marketing is Ashton Ramsey. He, his hotel and his business. Ben from the Reset Hotel, who's hardly contributed any TODs, okay? And the Twenty-Nine Palms Inn. If you look nicely, all the hotels are owned by people like me of East Indian. Why are we excluded from our businesses or the west side being excluded from being marketed? Now, you might say that the tourism is paying the one point five percent. Hey, if you brought the tourist to come stay at my hotel, trust me, I'd be willing to say, take that one point five to five percent. My properties are running, today I checked my properties, at forty percent or less occupancy. Where's the value you bring to me? You're not adding any value to my hotels. And then you might say, oh, it's one point five percent. But if you look at it, I'm paying nine percent TOD, which the tourist pays or the guest pays, plus the one point five is ten point five, ten point five percent. On the ten point five percent, now, I have to come out with almost three and a half percent credit card fees. City doesn't reimburse me and say, hey, you know what? Okay, you collected that fees in this thing. You can take off that three and a half percent, okay? The businesses are this thing, this thing, struggling, okay? If I'm running less than forty percent and most of my guests, if you look at them, they're people who come to work in the city or they are from the town, Twenty-Nine Palms. So, where's the tourists? If, if somebody checks in, I can tell you whether this is a tourist based on their ID and we have their addresses. I'd like you, Mayor, and I'd like, I mean, Councilwoman Ramirez, to think twice before you vote on this. Let's go and this thing, study this thing properly. Because most of the businesses that fall on, on you guys' ward is not being taken care of. And a couple of months back or six months back, I came and talked, talked to you all about the Shaw State, what a bad state it is going in. It is going to a deferred maintenance. Do you want that to happen when the time, those, those businesses, people driving, we'll see all those buildings going bad, bad maintenance? Thank you.
Thank you. Probably have to seven, eight, two. Close the public? Counsel? Mic's on?
I think the mic's on. Cindy, what's the resolution number? What's that, twenty-five, twenty? The same one? Well, I don't remember that. Whenever you're ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor, I am.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that the City Council uphold the public, oh, adopt Resolution Number twenty-five, twenty, confirming the levy, the T-Bid assessment.
Second.
Councilwoman Ramirez? Aye. Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Number seven?
Thank you, Mayor. So, number seven is a Historic Plaza Conditional Use Permit. This is more of a discussion. So, currently, the Historic Plaza has really experienced regentrification. There have been some fantastic business owners, energetic, very creative, very bright business owners that have come in. And they've really created an energy and created a buzz within what is an absolutely beautiful amenity, a beautiful area, but something that has been dead for years. And so, with this energy, with this vision, with these ideas, they've come up with ways to really invigorate this area. Historically, there was conditions that were placed over this that would limit the number of events. And so, tonight's agenda item, Mr. Gardner is going to talk about the history and some of the thoughts that he has had in terms of ways that as a city, we can support these creative business owners. Keith?
Yeah, and, and just very briefly to add to that, the Historic Plaza is very unique in the city in the sense that the drive aisles and the parking lots are owned by the city as opposed to private businesses. So, with the current development code limiting any sort of special events for four per year unless a conditional use permit is obtained, the question before the City Council that we would like to ask, myself and the City Manager, is would we, would the City Manager, or would the City Council be amenable to waiving a conditional use permit to allow for more than four events per year at the Historic Plaza? If the answer to that would be yes, this would not necessarily approve the conditional use permit as is. We'd have to come back and work out the details of a conditional use permit, the frequency and and the hours of operation and all that sort of thing for any potential events out there. And then we would also have to come up with an agreement with the Friends of, of the Historic Plaza to make sure that, you know, things are kept in good order. This is very much similar to how the farmer's market has been handled at, at Freedom Plaza. So, the question before you is, should we waive the fees similarly to what the farmer's market has done for Freedom Plaza, waive the fees for conditional use permit for the Historic Plaza?
And if I can contribute to that real briefly, Keith. So, essentially, what we're, I, I think, talking about is the goal of this is to establish lane lines for the Historic Plaza people, just to get out there, be creative, and kind of live their best life, right? And as opposed to right now, they have to come to the city every time they want to have an event. And that takes time away from their schedule, that takes time away from city staff. And so, this is one of those things, since it is such a unique development and such a unique location, there's very little residential around it. What are those lane lines that as a city, Keith, can work out with the Planning Commission that we can identify? And then really just let them go be, go do great things.
Counsel?
Well, that was a comment I was going to make. It has to go back to Planning Commission first anyway, and, but, okay. I'll wait, I'll hear from the public first.
No one else?
I just think, you know, speaking about the farmer's market, it's, it's been a benefit to the community, them being able to, you know, exercise and have that weekly market there. So, I, I definitely think it's worth exploring as a city, having a similar partnership with the Friends of the Historic Plaza.
No else? Good. All right. Open the public? Jimmy Brower?
Hi, my name is Jimmy Brower. I'm a local, and as it relates to this agenda item, I'm one of four directors of the nonprofit organization Friends of the Historic Plaza. This entity was formed in August of twenty twenty-four last year when a group of fellow small business owners located at the Historic Plaza identified a need for both advocacy for and preservation of the Historic Plaza, the original bedrock of our city's founding families and community celebrations. Since formation, the Historic Plaza has in many ways come back to life, as noted, over the last couple of years. And as a pillar destination and a successful venue for our city's residents, as well as for visitors to commerce, congregate, and celebrate through events specifically. A conditional use permit paid for, sponsored by the city, keeps the doors open and allowing the Historic Plaza and specifically the nonprofit that I represent to produce events in a long-term tenancy for continued survival while also creating an opportunity to thrive. Ultimately, the restrictions of the current temporary use permit limiting a max of total of four events at the Historic Plaza annually, regardless of applicant, does not allow this venue to breathe and grow as it has in the past and must for the future. So, I'm here just to really echo what has already been said. I'm here to simply advocate and encourage the City Council to approve the forward momentum that has continued to develop in allowing the Historic Plaza to become a more utilized venue for free community events that serve both the bettering of local residential life as well as the president, preservation of an iconic historical site for current and future generations. Thank you in advance to the entire City Council and staff from myself as well as the Friends of the Historic Plaza. And thank you to both the Director, Director Gardner and Dr. James for amplifying this concern. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Carlos?
Carlos, Carlos Blennen? I'm in favor with conditions, no pun intended. We must taking into account the time the city staff needs to review these applications because they should be reviewed. Where, where is this cost going? Should the public pay these city employees to benefit the venture of, venture, for these venture capitalists? I believe the only reason these fees should be waived is, should be waived, but I believe allowing for more multiple days of use for that year. But just the fees are concerning me most. The only way we should waive these fees are generally a nonprofit organization and not restricting anyone's rights to movement and/or, or their exclusive rights. By this, I mean, what if, is a religious organization or an animal self-awareness activity group gets permitted in this area? Would, would they allow, or the restriction of alcohol or meat on the grounds in the Historic Plaza? What if they only allow vendors that are under their ownership and restrict other access, restrict access to vendors to that area during an event? These are the conditions that Planning Department and others must consider when reviewing these applications, specifically how these requests do not conform to the city codes or remove or restrict others' exclusive rights. In short, if these applications restrict movement geographically or restrict, remove my exclusive rights, then they must pay the fees, pay the play, as the expression goes. Going back to the City Manager's thought on landlines, it sounds kind of like a, how you say? A land trust or homeowner association that it sounds like that basically will have a permit or a right-of-way easement to do certain conditions for stipulations. So, if they change anything that's in there or amend that's pre-approved, then they must come back to the City Planning Department for any of their requests. I just think, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Close the public? Back up here?
Well, there's obviously the, the details, it has to be worked out first by the Planning Commission because that's where it goes first. And then when it comes back to us, if we want to critique any of them. But obviously, this would, would, would help a lot of businesses in that area move forward and have events like Freedom Plaza does. So, I am definitely in favor of us having the Planning Commission review this and the fees be waived.
Motion? Go ahead.
I'm, I'm very thankful for all of the work that you guys do. Amazing, amazing events that you guys put on. I got to go see a City Manager spin in circles on electronic bull, which is nice and fun, right? The only thing that I would ask before this comes back to us is to make sure that you're speaking with all of the business owners, right? Just so that we can make sure that there's a general consensus, that people, that, you know, certain business owners can opt out if they choose not to be part of an event or anything like that and just be neighborly. I know there's a lot of amazing businesses in that area. And I, I just wanted to say thank you again for everything you do. I, I just wanted to say thank you again for everything you guys do for our community.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Do we need a motion for this, or just, just a nod?
The consensus is to go back to you?
Okay.
Well, I'm good with it going back to the planning commission.
Yeah, me too.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Number eight?
Great, thanks, sir. So, number eight is a waiver, and we've got, uh, Mr. Jesse Montez from the Marine Corps Base, and, uh, he's got, uh, some, some great information that he can come up to the podium and share. So essentially what this item is about is the, the base is currently restricted, so you have to have a responsibility, you have, you have to have a, uh, a need to go on the base, you have to have certain authorizations. And so currently, members of the community are not allowed to go on the base. Based on conversations with folks that have been here prior to September eleventh, uh, that the base was more open. And so one of the things that Jesse and his team have been working on is this category C waiver that would allow residents, once they've gone through the proper background check, to access base and access certain businesses on base. That helps those base businesses thrive, that gives our residents the ability to enjoy more businesses and to keep their dollars within our community, and of course, within the base community. So Jesse, would you like to put a finer point on that?
Uh, sure, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, um, community members, hello. My name is Jesse Montez, I'm the Deputy Assistant Chief of Staff for Marine Corps Community Services aboard the Combat Center. So, uh, what does, what does Marine Corps Community Services, uh, do? We provide, well, it's kind of in the name, yeah, we provide community services, which includes libraries, child development center, pools, uh, exercise facilities, and, um, Jersey Mike's, and, uh, and Popeyes Chicken, and, and other revenue generating, uh, facilities like that. And so the idea of this category C waiver, I'm sorry, let me give you a little more context. So every facility aboard the Combat Center is divided into one of three categories. Category A, meaning they're all funded by taxpayer dollars. Category B, meaning that they're funded by both category, by taxpayer dollars and non-appropriate funds, non-taxpayer dollars, revenue generation. And then category C, which is all revenue-generated, um, supported facilities. Um, this waiver would grant access to local, um, civilians that live in the area, the ability to access the installation, um, to gain access to these category C facilities, like the base theater, um, like, like I mentioned before, Jersey Mike's, uh, places like that, or GameStop, um, stuff that may not be available out here, um, in the city. The golf course too, as well. Yeah, that's right.
And so, so one of the things too, that additionally this comes up, is the base is the city's largest employer. And w- one of the things with any business, although albeit certainly the, the military is a different sort of business, but is employee, uh, retention and employee retraction, uh, ta- attraction. And so one of the thought processes here is that the better those businesses can do on base, the more they can thrive, the additional businesses that come, can come on base, the more attractive a de- destination the base becomes. And talking to someone that, uh, worked on the base, maybe even Jesse had mentioned that, uh, Camp Pendleton has twenty-seven different businesses? That service, the service members?
Over sixty name-brand businesses. Over sixty name-brand businesses that operate aboard Camp Pendleton.
And how many do we have, here in Twenty-Nine Palms?
Somewhere in the area of ten or eleven aboard the installation. Name-brand, you know, Popeyes, Jersey Mike's, GameStop, so.
So they have sixty, and we have ten.
That's right.
And so that was one of the things that in speaking with the committee general, is that the more attractive our city becomes, the easier it is going to be for the base to attract Marines and ke- to the base, and then keep the Marines at the base. So it's all kind of a bigger idea, the bigger vision of how do we grow our economy? And how do we make this already attractive place even more attractive?
Thank you very much for that, Stone, and just to add a little bit to that, kind of the phrase that we like to use is you recruit the Marine and you retain the family. Um, so this, this community, which is very heavy, I'm, I'm a veteran, um, lived here for seventeen years. Um, so, uh, providing those types of services, uh, to my family and to folks who otherwise may not have access to the installation, I think is a great step in breaking down the walls and the barriers that may exist from that community with this community and making it into one community. And isn't that the premise of Marine Corps Community Services?
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, so just to be clear, um, because you broke it down into three different categories, uh, the commissary and then, and the MCX, they are category B or A, or?
So, um, just to give a little bit of context, um, Marine Corps Community Services, a non-appropriated fund instrumentality. What, what does that mean? Um, that is, um, the set of laws and DOD instructions that give the federal government an ability to operate a business within the federal government. So we are federal employees that run businesses. The commissary is a sister non-appropriated fund instrumentality that's ran across the Department of Defense by the Army. Um, so this category C waiver does not contemplate access to, um, to the commissary. Um, as well as for the Marine Corps Exchange, um, it would grant access to a limited extent. Um, folks would be able to, uh, purchase consumables, stuff that you could generally consume within a day, um, and then local items. So if they wanted to go, uh, buy a T-shirt that has an Ugloban anchor on it, um, they could purchase stuff like that. But all the other stuff, um, you know, that's acquired through, uh, supply chains that make it of value as a benefit to active-duty members and their families. Um, as a result of that, and the price reduction, it would not, uh, be made available to the general public, because that's a benefit to the active-duty members and their families.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Nope. Better hurry. Open the public. Carlos? You have time. Robin?
Hi, Carlos Blannon. The, so far, the different, where you can shop, where you can't shop, sounds are very high exclusive HOA, but I'm in favor with a clarification, uh, granting civilian access to the military retail facilities. I just, uh, which are considered part of the city census. Then I guess, then all the cell stacks accumulated at these retail businesses come back to the city as revenue, right? Is not allocated for any DOD revenue? Uh, but, sorry, if the revenue from all these cell taxes comes to the town, then this is a win for everyone. Shop local, keep the money local. At the same time, it provides locals with access to a product that would otherwise need to purchase elsewhere. So basically, just my two thoughts. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
No. No. Ac- ac- active-duty members, um, and their families have, would have access to booze and tobacco. Alcohol, liquor, booze. Robin?
Hi, okay, for myself, I remember back in the day when the community had access to the base, we could freely drive on and drive off and access things. But I also remember, because the base was smaller and they didn't have as many businesses, we had a lot more active-duty military in town utilizing the businesses that were here, because there really wasn't much there for them to go to. So the, the smaller local businesses, you really profited from that. Now that they're getting more business on the base, we don't see as much interaction with a lot of the active-duty here in town. I mean, you'll see some smaller groups, but not like how it used to be. So my concern would be that if we did open this up, that it's, could possibly hurt some of our local, some, local smaller businesses. Um, so that's something to think of, because, I mean, are we going to be getting any tax dollars out of this? Um, what benefit to the community are we going to see if they're able to expand there and only a, a small portion of the community is able to access it? Thank you.
You want to answer?
Sure, sure, love to. Um, so e- every employee aboard the base lives in these communities. Um, so, um, I, I would argue that, not argument, so much as addressing the concern. E- every employee that works there brings that money back to the community, so, I mean, I guess that's the first part. Um, the, the second part of the concern is, it, it's a little bit, um, I'll, I'll try not to go into, uh, a swim lane that's not my own, but the reason why there was a reduction in personnel aboard, uh, the Combat Center is because, um, the structure of the Marine Corps changed. Um, and as a result of that, um, the installation lost, uh, um, a couple of commands that went elsewhere disappeared, like tanks and artillery. Um, the other part of that is, um, the, the Combat Center is the only, uh, resident schoolhouse in the entire Marine Corps. So what does that mean? Um, that means that we train thousands of Marines on an annual basis at the Marine Corps Communications and, and electronics school. Um, and so the nature of those, uh, Marines is, is very transient. Um, but what it also means is we bring Marines in, um, to the tune of about three thousand, up to ten thousand Marines on an annual basis that are sequestered aboard the installation, because they don't have access to transportation. So what are some of the initiatives that we've done to address that? More recently, um, we've engaged, and, and I don't want to get into too much of the Combat Center's swim lane, because I don't represent the Combat Center, I represent Marine Corps Communication, or, uh, MCCS, excuse me, um, which is we've partnered with the Bureau of Mission Indians, or at least the installation has, um, to provide, uh, transportation to, uh, those, uh, Marines from au- on the base to out in town, with a stop at, um, the city center, as well as a stop over at, um, over at the, uh, the casino. Uh, and so that was an initiative by the city, uh, in partnering, uh, with the installation, if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak out of turn, but to try and, uh, address that concern of getting the Marines from on the base out in town.
No one else? Counsel, comments?
Um, my husband is active-duty Marine. I am very thankful for all of the services that MCCS provides for our military family, and even some civilian employees that do live out here that, um, you know, have, uh, access to the base. And so I think a lot of people don't realize that MCCS, while it's its own acronym, is also the lifeline to, um, quality of life for, I would say, probably all the Marines and their, um, and their families, and I think that growing that, growing that partnership, that's one of the things that I was very important to me when I ran, was, I said, how do we bridge this gap? Because it feels like the base is the base and the city is the city. First step was ban the Mission Indians, getting the shuttle out here. Second step, I think, is, is, is really, from what I'm hearing, is, you know, you said everybody that, or majority of the people that work, um, on the base through MCCS are residents of Twenty-Nine Palms. So what I'm hearing is a stronger workforce.
Twenty-Nine Palms, Joshua Tree and Yucca Valley, sorry.
Okay, Marongo Basin.
Yeah, the surrounding.
Surrounding, yeah. Um, and i- I want to make sure that I understand this correctly, if you have more jobs to offer more people, then MCCS as a group or organization altogether gets stronger, which in turns means more events and better quality of life for our military family as well, correct?
Y- yes, ma'am, and, uh, thank you so much to your husband and, and to you for your service. Um, I think it's lost on a lot of folks that, yes, the service member is the one that's active-duty, um, but their family members are the ones that bring that quality of life to their experiences, especially out here in Twenty-Nine Palms, where a lot of service members are separated from their home base, because we're kind of, we're kind of a remote place, right? We always say two to three hours away from everything. Um, so your service here, along with your, your husband, is very important, I think, to not only MCCS, but to this community.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, anyone else?
Uh, ready for motion?
Yes.
Um, I may, I move that we, that the, that the city council authorize the mayor to sign and provide, uh, the Marine Corps a letter of support for a category C waiver.
Second. Councilmember Wright?
Um, I should have asked this question before, but I work for MCCS, so I think I need to abstain.
No, you, you don't profit from this, Mac.
Oh, okay, well, good. Aye.
You're not going to profit from this, you're okay, Mac.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
Thank you very much.
We also received, we also received, uh, a, a letter of, of support from Rediscovery's President, Sarah Lyons, on this. For the record. No, man. Future council issued items, changes, adds? No?
Just for clarity, um, the maintained roads versus non-maintained roads, or when do we expect that to kind of move forward to the count, to the agenda?
So we, uh, had a, a pretty, uh, good meeting, uh, with our insurance company, with, with our public works people, with our engineering people, um, that was, I believe, on Monday. Uh, I'm hoping to get that wrapped up, uh, definitely into you guys next month. Uh, and then we're going to be very clear as to what it means, and how we got here, and how a road becomes a maintained, city-maintained road, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're working out a lot of the technical details, uh, but, um, really trying to get it to you next month.
Thank you.
I have one. I would like for us to discuss the role that code enforcement could possibly play in the future, moving forward. Um, I understand that as a city, we are kind of left out of the tenant landlord issue. Um, however, with myself having a background in public health, when you're, you have mold, or you have walls that are falling out, and it then becomes a public health hazard. Um, I know some cities like San Francisco have adopted ordinances that, you know, really delineates that, um, that step between, is this a tenant landlord issue, or is this a public health issue? Um, and I'd really like for us to discuss that moving forward, and, uh, penalties, all of, you know, uh, all the whole nine yards.
Yeah, that, that's a very complex issue, and we've been, yeah, understood.
As, as a future initiated item.
Yeah.
Okay, and does that also, uh, contemplate the implementation of, uh, maybe for the long-term rentals, requiring a business license?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Very good.
And, and the reason behind this is because of the thirteen people that I spoke with about having issues with their landlord and the mold and the health hazards and the illnesses that they've contracted because of this. I would say, um, eleven of them are senior citizens, are low-income, are people that don't have English as a first language, so they don't really know where to go to get the help that they need. So this is, um, something that I would like to see us, at bare minimum, discuss.
Very good, thank you, ma'am.
So you're going to make a motion, put the?
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Very good.
We good? All right. Wait, then we got a?
Public comments?
We good? All right. Public comments, this is the time for the public to address city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council. It should not be consistent of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out a name and address slip and give it to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. Carlos?
Carlos Blannon, homeowner, uh, funny that you bring this up, it's what I'm going to be speaking about. Uh, I like that public health issue ordinance idea, because that is a very good way to delineating this issue that I think is a big problem in the city. I've been in the other coin as a tenant, trying to get any possible person who will pay me a fair decent rent. Um, so it goes back to, how you say, I say, people who don't know, ignorance, or people who don't have financial capability. So they have this fear of donating- So they have this fear of doing anything, like the Coachella Valley Housing Authority. Yes, they only had maybe one or two lawsuits, but hundreds and thousands of people who probably just said, keep it quiet. Let's wait till the lease is over and try to figure something out. So back to my program. So we need to start addressing the problem with these long-term rentals and home occupancy businesses. The individual who owns and operates these units, now as a homeowner, I have this issue. Units need to be regulated with proper business licenses. I hope you finally quote this, talking to the news agencies, because mostly I could never get quoted or misquoted. They allow their tenants to run loose on their properties without ever conducting the properly yearly compliance expectations. That is why the city needs to step in to establish a license fee process. Allow fire and building inspectors inspect these units for compliance every two years at a minimum. Because I'm being harassed by my neighbors who are just tenants pretending to be homeowners or fake property managers, preventing, preventing me from making my own home, uh, home improvements. By calling the showers to handle their civil issues, by, you know, usually hopefully using the police as intimidation or worse, exacerbate their situation. Thankfully, the deputies are well skilled and able to capable investigate and listen to the sides of the story and realize it's a civil matter, not their problem. So mainly because my repairs are ongoing and will continue to prevent their, operating their dog daycare business, which is illegal. Now, to, now to the, now, do their rights seem to supersede my exclusive rights of a homeowner? Actually, uh, who actually lives and is part of the city, who's investing in their property, trying to make the city at least a little bit more better. So it goes back to my point. So just because people need our need and need to find a way of occurring more value and wealth, so you're going to let them supersede everyone else's entitled rights by tranquility or, or use proper decent buildings because they don't maintain them anymore? So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, man. Sunny? Is that good enough? Is that close? All right.
I just, like, wanted to talk because the lady at the front, she was telling me I should come here. It was just regarding Ocatillo Road, like during the storm, basically. A lot of water, you know, went down that road and I property managed like a unit for my dad. And like, it just flooded everything, like around a hundred fifty thousand pounds worth of sand got washed out because that road on Ocatillo. It just needs like one of those asphalt bars that is like, it's on a lot of other roads. Like I see the majority of other roads in Twenty-Nine Palms are good. And like, I remember you guys were talking about maintained road versus non-maintained roads. It's on, it's on the list of maintained roads, Ocatillo, and they just said I should keep coming through because they said they've been really busy since the storm. It's just, yeah, it's just like, I just decided to come here and talk about it because like, I've been working on it for the past month. And I'm just like, if, if there was just that asphalt bar, it would fix everything. And it's like, maybe like thirty feet of asphalt bar would pre, on that road would pretty much fix it. For, for, not just for the place I manage, but for considerable amount of homes there, it just got like flooded from that road. That, that's, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. James?
And, and mayor, if that gentleman would be able to stay around at the end of the meeting, I could come and get your contact information. Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
My favorite person right now, Audrey Philpot?
Well, thank you. My name is Audrey Philpot. I'm the chairperson of the Twenty-Nine Palms Music Series Committee, which is an affiliate of the Basin Wide Foundation, a local nonprofit organization. And I'm here to deliver even more good news to you. As you know, we submitted our proposal at the end of June. We were selected, there were three hundred localities that submitted proposals and we were selected to be in a semifinal round against a hundred cities. And this was a voting round. So initially, our proposal had to meet the requirements of the Levitt Foundation. In the voting round, we had to demonstrate the public support for our proposal, that the public was behind this idea of providing thirty free concerts over three years in Freedom Plaza to the residents of Twenty-Nine Palms and the residents of anywhere who wanted to come to our concerts. So the news is that at the end of voting, which ended on the, I believe, the fifteenth of September, we came out as number twelve amongst a hundred cities, many of which were much larger than Twenty-Nine Palms. And this is because of the concerted effort, not only of the committee, but all of the supporters of the committee who held events, came to mixers, spread the word through social media, all the things that happened. And I have to say, many of the people here in the audience today who supported this effort. This is an incredible testament to what our city can do. So now we are at the stage where we are asked by the Levitt Foundation to submit five additional, up to five additional letters of support. The committee will be meeting to decide exactly what agencies of the city, uh, community organizations, et cetera, business organizations, we feel would be most beneficial to our chances of getting this grant, which in my feeling are very good. Uh, because one of the, one of the criteria, we met the first criteria of a good proposal. We met the second criteria of a large vote. The third criteria is now whether or not they decide that we are deserving of this grant. And so there we are. That's where we are. I'm here to report this to you. And thank you all, all, for your tremendous support of the efforts that we've made to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Another one of my favorite approval, LeAnn Clark.
Thank you. On behalf of, LeAnn Clark, on behalf of Action Twenty-Nine Palms and the Twenty-Nine Palms Ministerial Association. At the September ninth city council meeting, I shared with you about a possible mural that was coming to our city and we had a two and a half week window of time to accomplish that. I had a young man, Adam Foskey, who reached out to me on September ninth, very excited. As I shared with you, he is with an organization called The Task Force and they were partnered with the California Environmental Voters and the League of Conservation Voters. Although we were in contact and seemed to be moving forward, somehow there was just no further communication. And I emailed him requesting if the artist could provide me with a draft sketch of the mural. I had a couple of business owners to talk with that I thought would be interested. And I also gave a follow-up call, did not hear from him, and this morning he sent me a text. Said, "Good morning, LeAnn. I am so sorry for my delay on getting back to you. I had a sudden death in my family. The team took over the project without me and they found a wall in Indio. I am so sorry I was unresponsive. Thank you for all your help. I appreciate you and the wonderful conservation." I did let him know, we extended our condolences to him and his family and that if there was a future opportunity to support this conservation endeavor, to please keep our city in mind. And he wrote me back and he said, "Absolutely." And he said, "Also, I won't put it on such a short time constraint." So at any rate, I just wanted to update you on that. The other, from the Twenty-Nine Palms Ministerial Association, thank you Mayor Bildurain, thank you Mayor Proton, Proton Minz, our city clerk, as well as our city manager for supporting the mayor's prayer breakfast this morning. We had a great turnout and just thankful for that time. Also want to thank Mario Melendez, who is the owner of the Rosterita Cantina and Venue. He was so gracious to work with us in allowing his site to be used for our breakfast. So as councilmember Wright said, please support, and not just his business, but like what Vino says, let's make it a point to go on Yelp and go on Google and give some high reviews for our business community. I think that's really important. And I also want to give a shout out to Audrey for the coming in twelfth. Thank you, Audrey. The ministerial association and the church community supported that endeavor. And I also want to thank Jasmine and, uh, April, thank you, who coordinated the Charlie Kirk Vigil Prayer Service on Sunday. And just to thank our local citizens for what they're doing to bring some great things to the people in our community. And I just want to thank you all again and God bless you.
Thank you.
City manager's update?
Great. Thanks, sir. I'll keep this brief tonight. So really wanted to take a moment and acknowledge Public Works. Public Works has been working very diligently, working overtime, working on their days off in order to clear the roads from the August twenty-fifth storm event. And then last Thursday, in addition to an absolutely spectacular lightning show, we had a couple of significant downpours, some, some bursts over along baseline in Hanson Track. And so they have already begun working on Monday and today, of course, and will continue to clear those flows. So they really do an amazing job. They are responsible for a hundred and fifty miles of paved roads, twenty miles of dirt roads, and they accomplish that, they maintain that year round with five, five team members. So hopefully as our revenues grow, we're going to be able to grow that department because they absolutely need it. They do really amazing work. And there are a number of people, I always encourage people to, to contact them with thanks. There's, you know, occasionally folks will contact them with complaints and I think unfortunately they care about what they do. They focus on those complaints, but really the, the, the great work that they do on clearing the roads. And there's so many more people that at least contact me with their gratitude. So I just think that's good to pass on. So this, this, uh, this Friday, I am going to be donning a little chef hat, really more of a short order cook, and going to be putting on a barbecue for the shelter staff and the shelter volunteers to celebrate what they accomplished in our animal shelter. We have some of the highest survival rates, highest placement rates that our shelter has ever seen in the history of the city. We've even got, they even have programs now where they have got, they've got pets, dogs, that they are flying. They're working with different organizations, Wings of Rescue, that will fly adoptable pets. And they've flown them out to New York, New Jersey, Vermont. And so it's, it's heartening. It's absolutely amazing to see that the great work that they're doing. And it's through the partnership and their creativity and their hard work. So that's going to be this Friday. That's going to be for all of the, the folks that volunteer at the shelter. The shelter can always use people to volunteer. Because of a Marine Corps wife and her husband, Marine, they have shed up, set up a, gosh, it's, it's a foster program. And one of the beauties of that foster program is it keeps the, the, the animal out of the shelter, which can be a stressful environment. And you continue to socialize that animal. You have fun. It's part of your home. And taking out, taking good pictures. And then when someone sees those pictures online and will like, like to adopt it, that foster parent can bring that, that dog or that cat in and offer that, that, you know, that, that animal up to the family who would like to adopt. So that's going to be on Friday. And then also I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Philpot and Ms. Anna Stump. Incredible work. Absolutely amazing. When you take a look at the size of the cities that we are competing with, the hundred other cities. The fact that we placed twelfth really is a testament to your leadership and your strategy. And then of course, the council that backed the Hispanic Heritage Month. That is not only an important celebration of just an invaluable component of the American community, but it was also just a great opportunity to get people out there and say, hey, if you would like more events like this, you need to vote for the Levitt Grant. So thank you so much for everything that you've done. And that is all.
All right. Thank you. Anything last minute, counsel? Nope. Reminder, Pioneer Days is around the corner, favorite time of the year, most fun part of the year. We've got many events going, multiple events going from the sixteenth to the nineteenth. So mark your calendars and I'll see, hopefully see you all there. Celebration of Life for former finance director Ron Peck will be held Saturday, September twenty-seventh at eleven thirty a.m. at Little Church of the Desert. And I will adjourn this meeting in the memory of Ron Peck.